We all please rise for the salute to the flag. Flag by Mr. Lambert.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Missy?
Mr. Makowski.
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi.
Here.
Ms. Wilk.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here.
Ms. Crotty.
Here.
Mr. Vincenzi. Ms. Rosa.
Here.
Mr. Gambardella.
Here.
And Ms. Sabino.
Here.
Mr. Deacon.
Here.
Thank you. Just a note on Mr. Board Member, Mr. Vincenzi's absence. His son is the coach of our high school hockey team, the Watertown Pomprag, who just clinched the semifinal game at the Yale Bowl a little while ago, and they will advance to the state finals at the Yale Bowl on Friday, so we wish them congratulations, and we will see them on Friday. Board members should have received the minutes of the February 27th meeting of the Board of Education in their pocket on Friday. As I was not at that meeting, I would depend on all of you to review and let me know if there are any edits, suggestions, or changes that need to be made. Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the minutes from the February 27th, 2017 meeting of the Board of Education as submitted.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the best part of our evening this evening, awards and recognitions. Tonight, the Board of Education would like to congratulate Daniel Dupremium from Watertown High School for being named a finalist for the National Merit Scholarship. This places Daniel in the top 1% of the 1.6 million students for this scholarship program, excuse me, entrance. The parameters for the National Merit Scholarship include students' PSAT, combined with their academic achievement while they're at the high school. His academic merit continues to represent the highest levels of accomplishment, and we are very proud of how hard he has worked during his time at Watertown High School. The award recipients will be named in the spring, and we wish Daniel the best of luck as he continues in this process. And tonight, we not only have the National Merit Scholarship Program Certificate of Merit, and we also have a Celebration of Excellence Award for him this evening from the Board of Education. Daniel, please come forward. Very proud of you. Thank you for representing us so well. After the next award group, we'll ask for Daniel to come back so that we can take some photographs. Next, the Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate the following Watertown High School students who recently received state scholarship art awards for their work. State scholastic art awards for their work. Really having trouble finding my words tonight. I've had one sip of this coffee. What did you put in my coffee?
Oh.
Rather mess up the not-so-favorite ones. The Scholastic Art Awards recognizes students for their achievements based on merit by a selection of professional artists. Their artwork is on display at the Hartford Art School, along with work from students across the state. A special thank you to their dedicated teachers for their leadership. We are so very proud of these students and their efforts they put forth to create such inspired and personalized artistic work. Dr. Cardamola will call your name, and we ask that you come up to be recognized.
Abby Baker. Francesca Mancini. Congratulations, Francesca. Cameron Rizzo. Julia Remakis. Hi, Julia. Congratulations. Rachel Holly. Rachel, congratulations. Ahmed Malik. Congratulations, Ahmed. Congratulations. And Julia Dacchio. Sorry. I did. I did, okay. Congratulations, Julia.
Congratulations. Okay, we first ask Daniel to come up to take a picture with the Board of Education and Dr. Cardamola. And any of the administrators that are here from the high school as well. Congratulations. Now, the art students from the high school, and Mr. Jones and Dr. Cardamola. Thank you. Congratulations.
Enjoy your day tomorrow. Good night. I should have done you guys first.
Moving on to item three in the agenda, Board of Education Recognition Month. I have no idea what that means. Dr. Cardamola?
I'm sorry, you lost 90% of the audience. You probably aren't, but... I'm not what month... Yeah, now you passed it on.
Sorry.
I'm not one who's much for what I call the Hallmark holidays, Mother's Day, Valentine's Day, and no offense, I love my mom too, and... But I'm actually always glad that we pause to have a Board of Education Appreciation Month, if for no other reason than I know I'm like a broken record now for the third year of saying this, but so often, I think people don't realize, number one, that none of you is paid, and number two, the amount of work that it actually takes and commitment to be a board member. Not only are we here for these meetings, as people can see televised and so forth, there are many, many meetings which people are not at, and they do not see the amount of time, effort, and dedication that it takes to be a member of a Board of Education in any town, and certainly here in a small town where all of you are as involved as you are. From negotiations with the contracts to expulsion hearings that none of us like to attend, to committee meetings, budget and finance committee meetings, curriculum and instruction committees, facilities committee meetings, community engagement, you are here very often. And I never lose sight of what it takes for you to support this school district, our students, our teachers, our administrators, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, and certainly me. That said, I just wanted to take this time again to thank you for, number one, putting aside all else to do what's best for every one of our students and for our school district, because I think that that's what this Board of Education does best. A few weeks ago, when we did our budget presentation, at the end of that night, as you know, that was the night we actually had some people in the audience, someone who was here pulled me aside and had never been to one of our Board of Education meetings, and he said to me, "Wow." I was in another town, and someone told me that if I wanted to see how this was done, how a budget was put together, and how a functional Board of Education ran, I should come and see this meeting. And I am really glad that I did, because now I understand the way that it's supposed to work. And I believe he was someone who was looking for a similar seat, and so he was looking for how to function and what might be important. And he said to me, sitting in the audience, the one thing I couldn't tell was what party anyone was. And in this day and age, politically especially, I think that's part of what makes this Board so special, because you may be here to represent a particular party, and that is how you've come to sit on this Board, but when we sit here together, we make decisions together, and it's not what party elected you, it's not what party you represent, it's what's best for Watertown Public Schools and for all of our students, and for that, all of us are grateful. Thank you very much. Very small token. And as you know, again, if you calculate out the hours that you work, this is a very, very small token of our appreciation. It is a travel phone charger, which is something when you are on the road as much as you are, I know you all need. I'm just going to pass it down both sides.
Thank you, Dr. Cardamola, and thank you for your kind words as well.
Did I do this one? Do you have one? Yep.
I have to come around the other side and take it. Do I give them? I need one more.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cardamola. Moving on to item F in our agenda, report from our student council representative.
Thank you. At John Trumbull, Dr. Cardamola visited all classrooms and saw that the students understand the three Rs: ready, responsible, respectful, and that they are working hard in school. Also, the budget was presented to over 50 parents at the PTO meeting. At Judson, a math night for Polk and Judson parents was held on Thursday, March 2nd, in the Judson Library from 6:00, 7:00 p.m. by math specialist Mrs. Elise Archibald. The student council is running a fundraiser to benefit the March of Dimes, where students can purchase shamrocks, a school-wide picnic being a prize if students meet their goal. At Polk, Read Across America and Pyjama Day took place on March 2nd. Parent-teacher conferences were on Wednesday, March 8th, and they were very well attended. At Swift Middle School, 21 students were recognized for being soaring eagles, having showed dedication to academics, behavior, or attitude, or having been caught in an act of kindness or compassion. The Swift staff also held a week-long dress-down event, and combined with the hat day from student council, raised $400 for the Water Oak Circle of Sports. And at Watertown High School, our interact club hosted the Watertown Rotary Club's luncheon on Wednesday, March 8th in the cafeteria, and are appreciative of all the support that the Rotary Club provides. The parent-teacher conferences were on Wednesday, March 8th, and we are thankful for the continued support of our parents. And last but not least, the district art show will be held on this Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Cardamola, superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all of our parents who came out for our parent-teacher conferences. They were very well attended in all five schools. Likewise, thank you to Miss Yurice, who happens to be here tonight, for thinking ahead and rescheduling the district-wide art show to Thursday, because that is a rescheduled date. Likewise, you know, this is what happens, particularly when something has to be rescheduled, we end up with additional conflicts, but regardless, it is what it is. We also, that same night, although it's from 3:30 to 4:30, we have the Swift Middle School Invention Convention. Again, that's Thursday, March 16th, 3:30 to 4:30. We're very excited to be able to see all of our students who have participated in the annual Invention Convention. As you know, winners selected have the chance to compete at the state level. Last year, we had some students do just that and do very well. Another just announcement in conjunction with what Mr. Deacon already mentioned, thank you to Swift for the fundraising they did for Water Oak Gold Circle of Sports, and I'm sure you'll hear a lot about this, but I know that the date has been set for the annual awards dinner, and this is a special one because it is the 40th Annual Awards Dinner, and that will be on April 23rd, 2017, a Sunday that's at La Bella Vista, Farmwood Road in Waterbury, and you can see certainly me or many people in the schools, or Luigi Vellardi, Don Stupanic, or what is wrong with me right now? Richie Avalata for tickets to that, but I do have some in the office. Of course, all of us will be there to see our honorees this year. I'd like to thank the senior center for inviting me to lunch, had lunch with a number of our seniors last week, which was a very nice visit. We were able to talk about a number of things, answered a lot of questions, talked about the budget and so on. Likewise, as you know, I did a series of budget presentations after the board accepted the budget. I presented at John Trumbull. That was very well attended. I presented at Polk. That was a combination Polk-Judson, and of course, again, anyone else was invited from the community also last week, and I presented for Swift and High School, which was also fairly well attended, both by staff and by parents, so that was much appreciated. And anyone who was not able to make any of those dates, I am available to answer any questions as always. Email me, send me a phone number, and I also have, and again, I didn't bring them out, I have office hours, and I will look that up again, because they are not in front of me this minute, but I believe it is the 22nd. Also, I just wanted to thank both the Watertown Police Department and Mr. Jones and the administration, the teachers, and all of the staff at Watertown High School. We, as part of our continued improvements for school security, a drill was conducted for lockdown, and this was the first time the panic system was tested at the high school while it was full of students. So that went off without a hitch. It was done very well, and I appreciate that. And once again, we've now ensured students understand what happens when one of the panic alarms is pressed. You'll hear more about this, but I just wanted to at least begin to mention that, as you know, we have been working on standards-based report cards for years in grades K through five. We have fully implemented that in the year that we are in, and moving into next year, we are looking to take that to what, at this time, we consider to be the final year for the standards-based report card, and that is to move it into grade six, so that there is a continuum from K to six, which even though we have a split in physical locations, from an educational standpoint, K to six really represents what we would call the elementary level overall, and then standards and so forth start to change from seventh on through 12th grade. So, Dr. Parlato, thank you, led a standards-based report card committee with all grade six teachers. I attended for part of that myself, and as I said, it will be an extension of our work in grades K to five, and our hope is that through our teacher collaboration with Dr. Parlato and administrators, we will have a standards-based report card ready to go in the fall of 2017 for grade six. And again, we will be talking more about that amongst the board, but just as a first note of it. And as I think Mr. Deacon already mentioned, was able to get in a school visit to just, I think, the only school that I didn't spend considerable amount of time in the past two weeks was Judson, and I am scheduled to be there this week. However, we'll see what the rest of this week holds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cardamola. I'm going to swing it right back to you to discuss the proposed tuition rates for 27, 2018. Board members received in their packets a breakdown of the tuition rates that were proposed and the previous tuition rates for both preschool and all of our upper schools. Dr. Cardamola?
So, every year, once the board approves the budget, our tuition rates are set. And generally speaking, it is a per pupil expenditure amount that's developed, and as you know, that amount is reported to the state. The final amount is reported to the state when the final budget passes. But the tuition rates need to be set at this point, so that, moving forward, if we have any students who would attend from outside of district, and that does occasionally happen, that a parent chooses to send their student here, sometimes even just for a portion of a year after a move or something, but also because in our Just Friends preschool, as you know, that is a combination of non-disabled students and students with disability, who we balance out, so that there is time for students with disabilities with non-disabled peers, and likewise, so that we have a number of slots for non-disabled peers, for regular education students. Every year, I am asked how many slots we will have, especially around this time of year, and we're not able to give exactly the number until some testing is finished and so forth. A lot of that is done in conjunction with local preschools too, which is another reason that it is good that we have the collaboration that we do with our local preschools, because at least we get some information in advance about who may be coming to us from, say, a daycare center. So that said, if you look at the tuition rates for high school grades nine through 12, it is 12,000, proposing $12,725 for the 17, 18 school year. Middle school grades seven to eight, $11,690. Same for elementary grades, one through five, and then for kindergarten, $5,845. In Just Friends, these are the tuition-based students, and you know, they can go anywhere from one through five half-days a week, so for five full days, it'd be $2,640, and for a half, one half-day, for example, it's $530. And they progress from, obviously, in between, depending on how many days they attend. And again, these are non-disabled students choosing to attend our pre-K at John Trumbull.
Dr. Cardamola, could you please explain, even though we have full-day kindergarten available to all now, can you explain publicly why you see a smaller jump in tuition for kindergarten, even though the kids are there full day now?
You know, as I read this out loud, something occurred to me. I think when this was sent home, this is incorrect. I'm glad you... I was waiting a second. I didn't want to interrupt. This, when Elise made the copy of this, it is exactly the same. It should say K to five, $11,690.
Okay, thank you.
That is a holdover.
Just eliminate the first line.
Yes.
And add K to the second line.
Yes. So, see, the difference here is, last year, 16, 17, $5,730 would have been if you were paying for the extended day program.
Yep.
And this year, because they are there all day, $11,690. That is the tuition for grades K through five.
Thank you.
And thank you. I apologize, I didn't see this before.
Mr. Lambert?
You're sitting here.
I just thought, this question's probably going to only pertain to 16, 17 school year, because we don't have... We didn't pass our budget yet, so we really can't say how we compared to other schools in our DIRG. About where are we on our rates as compared to our DIRG? Are we on the high end, the middle area, the low end?
We are... We are on... In general, we are on the lower end, because it's also, it's proportionate to the dollar amount that we spend from a budgetary standpoint, and we are on the lower end of per pupil expenditures in the DIRG.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Typically, we are, there are 24 towns? 26 towns, 24 towns. 24 towns in our DIRG, and typically, I think we are 22, 23, sometimes we've, I think we've been 24.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cardamola. Moving on to item I, first round of public participation. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Moving on to item J. I do have just a couple of quick things in regards to my report between the last board meeting and today's board meeting. I, along with additional board members, attended two, if not three, of Dr. Cardamola's presentations to the PTOs and community members and faculty, and I was quite impressed with the level of participation and smoothness in which those budget presentations went. I also wanted to comment to Dr. Cardamola how well she adapted each of those presentations to the audience that she was seeing, relating facts to each school, how they would pertain to those parents and community members' children, and I just wanted to commend you for that. Very well received. There was also a meeting, rather, a gathering of some of the PTO execs within the school district to sort of encourage some cross-collaboration between the schools and to help Watertown increase voter turnout. We're sort of in a race to see if we can increase the percentage of Watertown folks that come out and vote in our budget referendums, and also translate that into any time there's a vote, whether it's for elections or budgets. And a lot of great discussions were had about different ways to encourage people to vote, and I was, I walked away from that being quite impressed with the amount of collaboration that's happening between the schools. For those of us who are on social media, you might notice how between the PTO Facebook pages, the PTSO Facebook pages, they are sharing each other's schools' events and cross-attending different events, and encouraging other schools to come to, let's say, Judson, coming to some Polk events, or Polk coming to Judson events, and also collaborating and sharing resources. It's a real reflection of what I think Dr. Cardamola has done with our school district, is now also happening within our PTOs, and I was very impressed with that, and certainly for those of us who have been involved in the PTO and the boards of ed, it's a wonderful thing to see, and it's certainly not something that we're used to doing in this district. So, that's quite remarkable. Looking ahead, in the coming two weeks, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Vincenzi, and I will be having our second round of custodial contract negotiations. Unfortunately, we do have a district art show, but some of us will be at negotiations, but I would encourage all other board members to come to the district art show at the high school between 4:00 and 6:00 on the 16th of March. On the 20th, I believe Josephine, and Janelle, and Cheryl, Tom, and Kathy, and myself will get to visit Judson School during the school day, and visit a fourth-grade math class, witness a library lesson, and also a computer technology lesson, and we are very much looking forward to that, and we thank the Judson administration for welcoming us on that school day. On the 21st of March, Dr. Cardamola is going to present the board of ed-approved budget to the town council at 7:30. I would encourage all members of the public to attend in the audience to show the support of the budget and the process, and then at that time, we'll move forward and wait for the public hearing date, and then the referendum date, which will follow. On the 28th of this month, Dr. Cardamola and I will attend a superintendent cohort panel discussion with Dr. Villanova, the director of LEAD Connecticut, which is an organization that brings together people with deep experience in leadership and leadership development to improve in the school district statewide. I am looking forward to that. Moving on to item K, committee reports, curriculum and instruction. Ms. Kathy?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vincenzi has nothing from policy and labor, so we'll move on to Mr. Lambert for budget and finance.
No report this time.
And back to you for facilities.
As far as the PBC and operations, we are still looking over the contract. Our town attorney, Mr. Paul Jessel, is still looking over the contract language between the town and the architect as far as the municipal center goes, so that's still under review.
Okay. Thank you very much. And just as a reminder, Mr. Lambert is the board liaison to the Public Buildings Committee, where it pertains to the municipal center building. Moving on to Mr. Makowski for governance and community engagement.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item L. Madam Secretary, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Moving on to item M, action items. Dr. Cardamola went over the tuition to be charged for each out-of-town pupil attending our schools. We did note... We did note a change in the sheet and we'll have a new one for the record that reflects the change that we made here this evening. I would ask that the board approve that. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I approve that the board approve of the proposed tuition rates for the school year 2017, 2018 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Murkowski. Any discussion?
Through the chair, if I may. Just to be clear, it's out-of-town pupils attending schools, but it's also our in-town pupils attending pre-K.
Thank you for that clarification. Note that in the motion. Thank you, Ms. Indy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This is a banner one. Could we erase this tape at any point in time? Number two, consideration of the approval of an acceptance of gift. Height Camp Corporation, which is a division of Michael's Corporation here in Watertown that does cement, mortar linings, epoxy resin coatings and cured-in place pipe. And I mention that because a lot of people aren't really familiar with that company. And seeing that they donated a large amount of computers and monitors to Watertown Public Schools valued at over three thousand dollars, I thought it was important that we become familiar with what they do in town. And I would accept a motion, I would entertain a motion to accept this donation.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the Height Camp Corporation's generous donation of computers and monitors to Watertown Public Schools valued at three thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and that a letter of appreciation be sent to the donor.
Thank you, Mr. Murkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item N, future agenda items and board member comments. Do any board members have any comments they'd like to make at this time or recommend any future agenda items? Mr. Lambert?
I just want to react to the Board of Education week here at our board.
It's a whole month, actually.
Our month, excuse me. Can we erase this tape? We, we on the board, I as a board member especially, I know, probably have the same feelings all around here. We love what we do here on Board of Education. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing it. So, and so have us for quite a long period of time. And I myself, I just want to say that I really enjoy working with everyone here, you know, and especially our board chair and our superintendent. They make our job much easier than it should be. So they give us so much help that it does make our job easy and much more pleasant. And thank you, everyone, for allowing us to do this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Anybody else?
Through the chair.
Please.
I just want to second that motion, everything that you said. I, myself, I feel the same. I think we have a wonderful board and it's such a pleasure to work with Leslie and Bridgette and everyone else. And I think that this is what makes the board non-political. I think that when we step in this room, our whole outlook is the children of Watertown.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? Seeing none, take us to our last round of public participation. Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? One more time, for those in the back behind the wall, any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:05.